So we start tonight with a public hearing. Purpose of the public hearing is to receive resident input regarding the fiscal year 2022-2023 Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, CAEPER. CAEPER is a report that outlines the progress made toward goals listed in the 2022-2023 Annual Action Plan. Notice that this public hearing was emailed to the media, emailed to various social service agencies and Urbana residents placed on the City of Urbana's website on Thursday, August 17th, 2023. I now declare the public hearing open. If anyone desires to express their views regarding community needs or the CAEPER process, please come forward and be recognized. Your written comments are also welcome. So there's no one here to provide comment. So seeing that there are no comments, I now declare the public hearing closed and we will move on to our regular commission meeting. And Braden or Hillary, do you want to call roll?
I'll call the roll. Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Freeman. Commissioner Silves.
Here.
Commissioner Diana.
Here.
Thank you.
We have a quorum. So the first item on our agenda is to look at the meeting minutes from April 25th, which was the last time we met. Those were provided to you in the packet. Is there a motion for regarding the minutes of April 25th, 2023?
I move to approve.
Is there a second? Thank you Patty. Patty makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks Bob. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion about the meeting minutes from April 25th, 2023?
Just thank you again for an excellent job as usual.
Any other comments? Okay, let's call for a vote on that motion. All approving the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, April 25th. Say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, same sign. The ayes have it and the meeting minutes from April 25th are approved. Are there any additions to the agenda we have for this evening?
There are no additions, but I just want to make a note that the item listed under new business, the CAEPER, that's actually going to be part of the staff report.
Okay.
We won't have any new business tonight, but we'll be discussing the CAEPER in the staff report section of the agenda.
Okay, thank you Braden. So is there any public input this evening? I don't think so, but was there any public input received?
We didn't receive any public input.
Thank you. And that takes us to item five, which is the staff report.
So I'll start off with some of the staffing updates that we've had in the Grants Division over the past couple of months. It's been a while since we've seen everyone. Sheila Dodd did retire back in July. We were sad to see her go, but she's had a very long and successful career, so she deserves her retirement, very much so. In the meantime, I am serving as the interim Grants Manager for the city. The other staffing update I wanted to mention is that I don't remember at our last meeting if this was discussed, but we have a new Community Development Director, Kimberly Smith. She started, I believe, in April, so she's got a couple of months under her belt, but she's our new director. And if you haven't met her already, I'd be happy to, you know, do an introduction via email. I'm sure she'd love to meet all of you. So those are some of the staffing updates that we have had in our department. Next, I will move down to the computer to do a brief presentation on the CAEPER. Okay, so I'll be providing a brief presentation on the fiscal year 2022-2023 Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report. This report really walks through what we've been up to in grants over the past year. It covers July 1, 2022 through June 30th, 2023. It's a HUD report that, again, captures the different projects we've been running in Urbana and the different accomplishment data and information that we've been collecting as part of those programs. Can everyone hear me okay? Okay. So the CAEPER is a HUD required report. We're required to submit it annually 90 days after the end of our program year. So our program year ends June 30th, so it's due to HUD every year on September 28th. It is an annual report of our performance toward our goals that we have identified in our Annual Action Plan. As you remember, every year we complete our Annual Action Plan, which sets out kind of what we intend to do, how much, you know, of our HUD money we intend to spend on, you know, which programs. And so then this report is kind of a look back on our previous year's Annual Action Plan, just to talk about the progress that we've made toward those goals. And it's really an assessment of that progress and also it can help us identify, you know, maybe goals that we haven't quite met, as well as the accomplishments that we have made in the community with funding from HUD. So as you look through the report, you'll see a lot of different numbers and percentages, and I just want to provide a little context. So the numbers that we report that the report covers come from two separate plans. So like I said, this is a look back on our previous year Annual Action Plan. So again, it's looking at what we did between July 1, 2022 and June 30th, 2023. But it's also pulling data from our consolidated plan, which is that broader five-year plan, the 2020 through 2024 consolidated plan. And the CAEPER essentially shows not only the progress we've made in the last year on our one-year goals, but it also shows the progress that we've made on those broader five-year goals. That way we can kind of track, you know, how we're doing throughout that five-year period. So as you look through the plan, and I'll point out kind of where these numbers are, but you'll kind of see numbers from those two different reporting periods. So what's in the CAEPER? It's a pretty lengthy report, so I'll just highlight kind of the most, I think, significant or important areas of the CAEPER. The CR-05 is the Goals and Outcomes, and you'll see that's at the beginning. There's a chart, that's where all the numbers and percentages are, and I'll walk through that in more detail in a moment. The CR-10 is the Racial and Ethnic Composition Report. The CR-15 highlights all the resources and investments that we've utilized with these HUD funds. The CR-20 is the Affordable Housing Section. And then the attachment at the end is the PR-25, and that is the financial summary of our Community Development Block Grant Funding. So you can kind of see a breakdown of, you know, how much we've received, what we've been doing with it, and where that money has been going. So the CAEPER, we created in HUD's online database system, the Integrated Disbursement Information System, which we call IDIS. We pull the data from that system. And the data it's pulling comes from a couple of different places. It comes from the accomplishments that we're reporting for each project. So every time we build a house, every time we fund a rental assistance program, for example, we're entering, you know, the client information of the people who are benefiting from that program. So that data is pulled out of IDIS, and that helps us kind of, again, with that sort of the racial breakdown, income levels and things like that. We're able to see all those numbers based on that accomplishment data. It's also pulling financial numbers from the drawdowns that we do in the system. Whenever we complete a project or when we're working on a project, we will submit draws to HUD, basically requesting that HUD reimburse us for the eligible expenses that we are incurring as part of our program. So it's tracking all that financial data in the system as well. And then the report also gets data from outside sources. So there's a section specifically that talks about homelessness in Champaign County. That data is pulled from some community stakeholders and partners that we work with that work specifically with homelessness issues. We don't report that data directly in IDIS, but we get it from those outside sources and from those partners we have in the community. So in the 2022-2023 fiscal year, this is a breakdown of the funding that we had for our two HUD-funded programs, the Community Development Block Grant and the Home Investment Partnership Program. That middle column, Amount Available, that amount includes our 2022-2023 allocation that we received from HUD, but it also includes prior year unexpended funds, because we're allowed to carry over funding from year to year. So sometimes we accrue a little bit of a balance, so that amount is reflected in there. It also reflects any program income that we receive as part of operating these programs. So an example of program income would be, for example, our transitional housing. We have three transitional housing units. Those residents pay rent to us, and that would be an example of program income. So that's all reflected there in that central column, Amount Available. And then you can see Amount Expended. That's how much we've spent from both of these programs during the 2022-2023 fiscal year. So I have a couple of pictures here just of some of the programs we've run throughout the year. We, as you all know, we fund a variety of different programs, home repairs, accessibility modifications to low-income houses, as well as, you know, our social service and youth service grant programs. So the CR-05, which you see at the beginning of your report, that's the breakdown of Goals and Outcomes. I want to, before I delve into some of our accomplishments, I wanted to give some explanation. You might see on there, there's a couple categories that are listed at 0% completed, and I just wanted to provide a brief explanation for that. You'll notice that Business Assistance is listed as a project, and that's listed at 0%. The reason for that is that the Business Assistance Program we were operating was specifically in response to COVID. It's not a program we normally are able to operate using CDBG or home funding. During COVID-19, HUD allowed some flexibility for spending on small businesses that needed assistance. So we added that as a project in our plan, but it's not something that we will anymore be able to spend our money on. So that's why it shows up as 0%. We haven't budgeted any money in that category, because again, it's kind of a defunct project at this point. You'll also notice that Direct Financial Assistance to Homeowners is listed at 0%. That project specifically was a Down Payment Assistance Program that we ran for low-income individuals who wanted to buy a home in Urbana, but they needed assistance with kind of the down payment expenses. We did operate that program in fiscal year 21, 22, but we just didn't get anyone to apply for it. So we decided to not run it this next year, just because we didn't see that there was a huge need for that in the community. Partially that was because interest rates were really low at that time, so people didn't really have a need for down payment assistance. In the future, if we hear, you know, as part of our public input, that people really want down payment assistance or need down payment assistance, we can always add that program back into our, as part of our programs. But we didn't run it in 22, 23, because we didn't feel that there was a need for it. And then you'll also notice that buildings demolished. That's part of a blight reduction goal that we have. That's listed at 0%. We didn't demolish any blighted homes in the previous fiscal year, just because we were kind of prioritizing our code enforcement money to other areas. So that's just to provide some context there for that. The accomplishments, some of the accomplishments that I do want to highlight from the CR-05 report, we completed 26 home repairs for low-income residents in Urbana. Those included, again, our accessibility modifications, our emergency repair program, as well as our senior repair program for low-income seniors. We, through our CHODOs, Habitat for Humanity, and First Followers, we constructed seven affordable housing units. We provided tenant-based rental assistance to 36 low-income households. The public infrastructure project that we funded using Community Development Block Grant Funding impacted 150 low-income households. And then our public service spending provided services to 254 low-income Urbana youth. So I'll go into a little bit more about who we serve. So you see here the breakdown of extremely low income, low income, moderate income, and then the numbers under CDBG and home are the number of households that we served in those categories. Extremely low income is considered 30% of the area median income, and below. Low income is, I believe, 30 to 50% of the area median income. And then moderate income is about 50 to 60% of the area median income. And I had those ranges actually written down, so I could give an example, but I forgot my notes. So I think someone who's a household that's at moderate income, a household that's at about 60% AMI for a family of four, I believe it would be about $48,000 annually. So again, they're considered to be low income based on the metrics that HUD uses. This is the racial breakdown that we're able to pull from IDIS. These categories are HUD's categories. I didn't, this isn't my terminology, this is what the report spits out. But you can see there the racial breakdown of the individuals and the households that are receiving benefits through our programs. And then you'll also notice in the report, there's a section that talks about homelessness in Champaign County. This is the data that was pulled from some of our community partners, specifically the Point in Time and Housing Inventory Count, which is an annual census of the homeless population that's conducted every January. You see the total, the numbers have gone up over the past year. You can see the 2022 number compared to the 2023 number. You know, the number of individuals and households experiencing homelessness has gone up slightly over the past year, which is definitely a trend that we want to keep in mind. You'll also see the number of individuals that are current, that were in emergency shelter, the number in transitional housing, the number of chronically homeless individuals. Someone is defined as chronically homeless if they've been homeless for an extended period of time and if they have like a comorbidity like a disability or substance abuse issues. Yes. Yeah, so the total individuals are all of the people that were captured in the census as being homeless. Unsheltered means that when the count was conducted, they were sleeping somewhere not meant for human habitation. So in a parking garage, on the sidewalk, on a park bench, or something like that. That means that you're unsheltered homeless. And then households, so the 215 individuals came from 153 households. So that's kind of what that is showing there. Does that make sense? So they were, if you look down, it's a kind of a combination. Either they were found in emergency shelter, a transitional housing program, some other type of program in the community. It kind of depends. And we acknowledge that these numbers are probably an undercount. The Point in Time and the Housing Inventory Count are pretty thorough, but it's only captures really one point in time, because again, it's conducted that last week of January every year. And so if that's a HUD requirement, they require that you hold these counts that time of year. So the numbers probably fluctuate throughout the year, and we estimate that they are probably higher community-wide, but those were the numbers that we captured in the most recent count. So I talked a little bit about the accomplishments, you know, the projects we've been able to make progress on and the goals that we've been able to make progress on. But you'll notice if you look at that CR-05 report in terms of, you know, percentages and how many people we've been able to serve, there were some goals that we weren't able to fully meet, and I'll kind of walk through those. You'll notice a big gap is affordable rental construction. We just weren't able to make any progress on actually building permanently affordable rental housing in the community, which is a huge goal of ours. We hear constantly that rent is increasing and that residents struggle with the rising cost of housing. So we did work with, in the 2022-2023 fiscal year, we did work with an affordable housing developer. We were trying to get a development going to construct rental units. Unfortunately, that, we weren't able to make progress on that. So that's something that for the next year, we're going to continue to work toward, to make sure we can meet those goals. Part of that, you know, just the struggle with building right now, those ongoing supply chain shortages. We know, working with Habitat, we've heard a lot about, you know, kind of slowing down their operations because of just the cost of the increasing cost of materials, but also just the difficulty they've had in getting supplies and material to build their homes. So that continues to kind of impact our numbers and make it harder to do things quickly and get people housed quickly. Capacity of partner agencies is another area where, you know, we struggle. We rely a lot on community partners, nonprofits, different organizations to really implement a lot of these programs. We fund them, but again, we rely on community partners to actually implement them. And just because of, again, the ongoing effects of the pandemic and, you know, staffing shortages, staff turnover, it makes it hard sometimes for agencies to really utilize the funding fully to make that impact on the community. Kind of a good challenge, but a challenge nonetheless, is the additional COVID funding that we have received over the past couple of years. You know, too much money. I'm never going to complain about having too much money, but with every new pot of money we got during COVID, it required, you know, that we kind of speed up and try to make sure we're not falling behind. So we did have some program slowdown just because of our own capacity issues, and we received 2.9 million in home ARP funding, which was a wonderful pot of money that we discussed with all of you to specifically support housing and homeless issues in the community. That's a big program. It's a lot for just a couple of people to manage, so we are working diligently through that. But again, that's been something, that infusion of additional funding into the community has been more of a capacity issue than anything in the past couple of years. And then looking forward, so we're currently, our current consolidated plan is 2020 through 2024, which means we're coming to the end of that consolidated plan. Beginning next year, we'll start the planning process for our next five-year plan, our 2025 through 2029 consolidated plan. So that will include a lot of community input, a lot of community engagement to just hear about, you know, what are the needs in the community? How do residents want this funding to be spent? And how can we do that in a smart manner? So you'll all be part of that planning process as well. The city is working with several community partners, including, you know, Champaign, Savoy, Rantoul, Mohammed, on a countywide housing study. You know, as I'm sure all of you know, data is really important to what we do. We want to know where are the housing gaps? And so it's where we've started the process of working together on a countywide housing study that will help identify some of those gaps and maybe give us some more direction and some more data that will be really, really helpful. So we hope to have that completed within the next year or so, and I'll make sure to keep all of you updated on that as well. And then again, just hearing about what those ongoing community needs are, you know, what are we doing that's working? What can we change to work better? That's always going to be part of our planning process each year. So we'll continue to work diligently on that. So that's really all I had, but I'm happy to answer any more questions. I'll go back to my seat though, if that's okay. So that's the strategic plan, refers to that five-year plan. This report can get a little wonky, because, you know, if you look over to the left-hand side of the page, you see it says, "Provide decent affordable housing opportunities." So when you go into the system, it allows you to add goals to specific, like overarching categories. So for that specific category, we didn't initially in our five-year plan indicate that we were expecting any accomplishments. We did actually, though, report this last year, some accomplishments, so that was a little bit above and beyond what we were expecting. But for that category, initially, it was not anticipated that there would be accomplishments for that specific category. If you go under, like it says Preserve Consortium Neighborhood on page three at the top, that's similar. You see it, we indicated six buildings would be demolished as part of code enforcement and blight reduction. So things get reported in kind of different line items, and it can kind of make it look wonky, but we just report, we report the accomplishments for each year in the category that most closely corresponds, if that makes sense.
My other question is just with regard to formatting. Are you allowed to play with the formatting on your printing when you do this?
Um, to some extent.
Because this section that we're just talking about there would read a lot easier if you could format your headers to print on each of those pages.
Yes, that actually makes, yes, I agree. That's a good idea.
If you can, I don't know if you can or not, but.
So that's a term that is specific to the home program. So the CDBG funding is just, has to be used just within the corporate limits of Urbana. The Home Investment Partnership funding that we receive, we are in a consortium with the City of Champaign and then our Champaign County Regional Planning Commission, which represents like unincorporated Champaign County. So the Consortium Neighborhood means like neighborhood revitalization projects that are in the consortium. So either Urbana or Champaign or the unincorporated Champaign County, so it's a little bit of a broader area.
Essent and Banymore, is that kind of everything but Rantoul?
Yes. I don't know, they do, they're a separate, I believe, entitlement entity, meaning they get an allocation from HUD separate from... Any other questions?
Do you need any action on this, Braden? Or you're just showing it kind of as an FYI to keep us up to date on...
Yeah, this is really informational. It's not, it doesn't need to be voted on. It's part of our public input guidelines. So there, we are required to do a 30-day public comment period on this, and this public hearing is part of that, as well as this informational session. The 30-day public comment period began yesterday, and it will run through, I believe, September 20th. I'll be presenting this at council next week, again, just as an informational. Council doesn't need to vote on it either. It's just to give some information and to provide the public an opportunity to ask questions or to make comments on it. And again, we will be receiving comment up until September 20th on the plan.
So it's on the city website if someone wanted to look at it?
Yes, it's on the city's website. If you go to the Grants Management page, it's listed there with our other, our Annual Action Plan and our other plans are listed there. There are also hard copies available at the Community Development Front Desk here at the City Building, the City Clerk's Desk, and then also at the Urbana Free Library Front Desk.
Do you want to kind of spread the word that this is available for review and encourage people to go to the website?
Yeah, so we did, like I said, we did... Yeah, so we did, like I said, we did post an announcement on the landing page of the city's website, and it was also sent out through the city's social media as well. And then again, like I said, I'll be presenting it as a staff report next Monday to city council. So if anyone's watching or attending, they can get some more information about it there as well.
I wonder if, I'm thinking about our neighborhood listserv, Patty's on that too. If we just had a little blurb that said, if you're interested in looking at this, here's the website of the city, because sometimes people don't realize that it's available for review, and then they see it's finished, and they said, why didn't we get a chance to look at that?
Could I send you like a link and like a little blurb to share?
Yeah, we can put it on the website, on the neighborhood listserv. And there are other neighborhood listservs that that might be a really effective way to get the word out and provide a link that's so easy for people to find that they'll actually do it.
I can do, yeah, I can certainly do that. So that concludes our staff report.
Thank you. So is there any unfinished business to come before the commission this evening?
Uh, no.
And there's no new business. So having reached the end of our agenda with no other items, we are adjourned. Thank you. Thanks for the report. This was a very clear, helpful explanation of this document, the CAPER, the infamous CAPER.